All right Nancy, I turned it on. I did, it's recording. So we can call the meeting to order. Here is the planning board and we should do roll call. Do we want the microphone? Does that make everyone happier?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a microphone. So we can call the order. Anna Carver.
Rick Guyer.
John Albert.
Jessica Giles.
Victoria Romanoff.
Laura Schneider.
Guy Crowe.
Okay, and Tom Myers was not able to join us this evening, but we have a recorder and we'll take good notes. So, does anyone on the board have anything to add or delete from the agenda? No. Okay, great. So we were going to approve the minutes from last meeting, however, there is a delay in getting those done. As you can see, Kami Morse is not with us this evening. She had some pressing matters she needed to attend to. So, we will have to do that for next time. Which leads to board chair comments, which I can guarantee are not going to take 10 minutes. So, my point of just addressing our team here at the table is just to recognize once again and forever and ever, and we'll call upon him more when we need him, though good work that Rick has done in this position to make us all feel like we know what to expect and to bring in these good experts and involve the public. And it's fully my intention as a chair to continue in that process. Really, it's not just, I guess, just to be the one to say, "Okay, time, moving on." That's really the most important part, I think. And to make sure that we do address the public, to reinforce that no one, though I do speak fast, is trying to fast-track anything, that this is an important matter. Nor are we trying to delay anything. We're just going through our process and appreciate all of you here. And you can still continue to reach out to us on all those ways that you do with the email and through The Village Clerk. Okay, any comments? We do have a letter which I do not believe ended up getting printed from Camille that was submitted on the 12th. It's in our Dropbox and it's just here on the agenda to acknowledge that we have gotten a letter taking it into consideration. And so now we can move on to item number seven, which is MRB, Lance is here and he's going to give us a review. Last time, right, we went over part one of the EAF. There were some changes that needed to be made. He's going to address some of those and I think he also has another thing to add. So Lance, when you're ready.
Sure. So MRB group did respond to revised plans. I don't know if you all had a printed copy prior to tonight, so I brought copies with me tonight. And MRB letter dated August 22nd. That is basically at the last meeting we mentioned that the applicant had provided revised plans adjusting our earlier comments, I believe they were April. So this is the latest and greatest letter from our office in response to those plans. Our comment letter has dwindled down from, I think it was 90-some odd comments and now we're around 30. So, I think we're moving in the right direction in terms of comments and items that are remaining to be addressed. Going forward, there is a couple items that we're going to work through the Department of Public works with, just to make sure that they're okay with some of the stuff that's being proposed. So I hope to reach out to him prior to the next board meeting to see if we can have at least a response from his office as to where they stand with some of the items on the agenda, which is the Village Road and water and sewer locations. We'll continue to work with the applicant and their team to, in response to our letter, make sure that we're on the same page there, but so far, so good. As it relates to the EAF, part one, excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't know if you want to go line item by line item, but I figured I can kind of cover each page as quick as I can, identifying the changes that were suggested by the board and then to confirm that they were in fact changed.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, so, the front page, page one. The two changes were the project contact. We asked them to have same bed sponsored, they did. And then the project owner, I think there's a misnote of a subtitle. Those are not.
Excuse me, which document are you referring to?
So, I believe, yeah, I'm sorry. The EAF part one, which we went over at the last board meeting, was revised based on the board's concerns and requests and then resubmitted to us. I know there is some questions that we may or may not still have on that EAF part one based on the email that you had forwarded out, but for right now, I thought I could go over the board's comments to confirm that those have in fact been addressed. So, page one of that EAF part one, I believe was two. Comments the board have had, wasn't fact revised. On page two, in regards to zoning board, we had asked them to identify that there was going to be a special use permit requirement. The date for when that requirement would be is unknown at this time.
Where is that?
So, I think if you're looking at your sheet, starting from the top, it's the third box, C.
B, C, okay.
So that was identified as no before, it's now yes. And then they identified the special use permit.
So it is on the email attachment that we've got?
Yes, it says potential.
Okay, I'm going to have to figure it out later because I, yeah, they're different email attachments.
Okay.
And page three, at the bottom, D1 section, where it talks about the number of proposed lots. I believe before it was 15, now it's 14. And then likewise, the maximum square footage of said lot has a change to, it's not 334,000, quarter nine.
Yeah, let me just get our phones here on the, because it is this. So if you look at this document, which came out today, we're going to put this document in the EAF. Yep, yep, and this will now be on page with Lance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Lance, the number of lots was changed to 14 on page one as well?
Oh, yes, in the description, yes, I missed that earlier. So it was just references page one, in their description of the project, prior to an earlier version of this, by 50 lots in the description, now it's revised to 14. Moving on.
I had note here that on the total acreage, to be physically disturbed, there is a small change to that.
Plus or minus?
Is there?
Yes, I apologize, I missed that. But no, that is in fact been added. Page four. I believe there's some clarification as to, going down from the top again, item H, six, earth fill was added for the description. I believe that was the only change on this page.
On the bottom page, it'll be to D.
Oh, clarification as to.
Yeah, we removed the potential.
Potential, in regards to the very bottom, D section.
So we removed the word likely.
Likely was removed. On page five, at the top, I think this is similar to that. We removed likely from this area, but also clarified the total disturbance associated with the wetlands. So the first one, jurisdictional wetland A. The fill now is .02 acres. And then, moving on, it says jurisdictional wetland B. That stayed the same. And then the total fill of jurisdictional wetlands equals, it's now 0.07. So that was revised. Page six. Middle of the page, E. In regards to how much of purbius surface will the project create? The number is 4.69. I believe that was the only change on this sheet. Page seven, J, as it relates to the traffic. With board discussion, we identified this as a yes instead of a no. And then it says, if it's a yes, when is the peak traffic expected? I checked off morning and evening. And then, number two, says for commercial activities, only projected number of semi truck trips, that's an A. Parking spaces existing are zero, proposed 154, total increase 154. And then four, does the project action include shared use parking? The answer is yes. And then five, they gave us a description. Refer to the attached traffic impact study, creation of a new public right-of-way connected to Pensaventon Yad, creation of a new private drive connecting to South Street, creation of a new horseshoe-shaped interior public road right-of-way. And then, moving on, five, we have, six, that's a yes. Seven was a no. And eight was a yes. I believe those are the items of the traffic that we got until the last meeting. Those are the only changes on that sheet. Page eight, there was an edit. Number Q2, middle of the page. It says, will the proposed action use integrated pest management practices? The prior version of this had, the answer is yes. It didn't have, I think it was no. But neither right, they didn't have to answer that question because the subsequent question says that if the answer is no, they don't have to answer that question. So that was removed from the version that you're looking at. Are, the very next question, will the proposed action commercial industrial projects only involve or acquire the management of disposal of solid waste? The answer is no. The prior version had yes. Those are the only changes there. On page nine, the very bottom, under section E, where we have the type of land use covering the project site. Based on earlier revisions and revisions that we made, we had to change some of the acreage. So, starting with bullet number one in regards to roads and buildings, that's now 4.69. And then the change, plus or minus, is 4.69.
What had that been before? 4.63?
63? Meadows was 12, the third bullet, 12.26. The other one was 12.25. And then after the second category over, after acreage through project completion, they identified 7.15. The very early version was 7.215. And then, so the net change is negative 5.11. And then down to the wetlands bullet. The current acreage stayed the same, 1.34. After the project completion, the acreage changed to 1.27. For those, 1.26. So the net change was negative 0.07, which is what we reached right there. I don't believe there was any changes on page 10. Page 11. Under E2, natural resources, when we were talking about letter C, predominant soil types. Then we had a fairly lengthy discussion on the soil types. The third line where we had OBIT, I apologize, page 11. I think it was OBIT silo, it's actually OBIT and Lansing silos. I think you guys made that call the last board meeting. And then the percentages were off. They revised that now to 19.7, so it should be 100%. I believe the other area where a modification was made was under H, surface wires and features, effort down the page, under bullet wetlands. And stated the name of the wetlands, and wetlands was identified as wetlands A through F. And then Army Corps of Engineers, completing jurisdictional determination is what was referenced before. It's now been completed. But that was the only change on that page. Top of page 12, we now, under M, the predominant wildlife species, and now refers to the floor and fawn report that was provided in the applicant's report. I don't think there was another change on the sheet. And then page 10, I'm sorry, page 13, the last sheet. The only change is going to be the date and then officially the signature once it's ready for that. So, those were the board's recommended revisions and I believe the applicant had revised it, but if I understand correctly, the zoning officer had some questions that she had submitted in an email out to everybody. I apologize, I don't have the email in front of me, but I think I know some of them. Thank you.
And just to clarify that, this was a conversation I was having with Joseph Smith.
Sure.
And so it's based on, yeah, that conversation and follow-up there. So the email representing our interchange and the revisions that he had addressed, then I had sent to board. So I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it.
Your responses?
Yeah.
I have not seen a revised rendition of the EAF addressing those yet. But I do have. We discussed them. Okay, make sure everybody was good. Perfect. So I don't know, do we either go over, do you want to go over those changes?
Well, I think that if Laura wants to, do you have some, I think it's clear in your email, do you want to go over that?
Again, these are just ones that, some discrepancies that I've seen and so I wanted to make sure that those were addressed. And some of them related to issues that we were still discussing. So I'll just go through them briefly. I won't go into, there were a couple of blank spaces in terms of government approvals. So, the one being the zoning board appeals. The application date was to be dependent on zoning determination. Second was just clarification on the Army Corps of Engineers permit and that's.
Yeah, right. They submitted the application, but have not yet received the permit from the applicant. And they covered them in the initial my permit for the coverages that were identified in the jurisdictional report.
Then going into section D2 in project operations, the times that were there, I felt were not reflective of the nursery school operations. But again, this also merges into that discussion. So I don't know, this isn't necessarily the complete, I guess, the process of clarifying that. Just want to make sure that we were all here. So I sense that there was a little bit of different people at different applicants.
You know, looking at that, that would be reflected on page seven of the EAF. You know, being that they only get two checks, you know, there's only three boxes there to check as it relates to the peak traffic for a morning, evening, and a weekend. But they do give you a fourth box, which is randomly between hours of, and that's only if the peak flow is going to be greater than either the morning or the evening. So they check both morning and evening because I think in the traffic report, as I understand it, the peak, the highest level of traffic recorded was both morning and then the evening. That the noon traffic, even with the nursery school, didn't trump either of those timetables. If it did, then the hours of that would then reflect in that category.
So that, because that was, it didn't directly, I think on page seven, hours of operation. Is it specifically for the traffic study? I mean, even though the.
Oh, at the bottom? No, that's, I think, that's the project overall. Yeah, just overall.
It's just the overall, right. So I wanted to reflect there because in going through the operations, as I understand them, there's going to be a noon time pickup. So obviously, if you have like a morning session, the key times would be morning to drop off and then noon to pick up.
Right.
And that was the response to, that that's going to be reflected in the whatever revisions are made. And then, this is a little bit different, again in D2, project operations, hours of operation. It was worded at the nursery school, or, oh, that the operations would be 8 to 5 in the daycare center. And this kind of opened up the whole question because I've seen it on other documents as well, where sometimes it's referred to as nursery school and sometimes daycare center. So now that goes into the whole issue of the determination that Matt had made. And then if there's any need for, if there's going to be any change plans, then that needs to be reflected.
Correct. So the determination at this point has been nursery school?
Yeah.
Did the hours of operation as identified in this change for that? Is it still going to be 8 to 5? I think that's something we just need to clarify back to the nursery school. So they had given us information, we have used it as the basis. I think they had also provided separately a letter in response to some requests for more information at some point. And there was reference in there to a daycare license. But our understanding is it's a nursery school program. It may be a nursery school program in the morning and the evening, afternoon, two nursery school sessions.
Yep.
But that's what we're getting clarification. And so our goal, Laura, will be to provide to you in that what we've discussed is, we'll update our supplemental to Matt that triggered the letter that said nursery school, no SUP, community building, yes SUP or community group, yes SUP. We'll provide more information on both and then you can kind of evaluate.
Excuse me for being obtuse, I'm just behind the flow. But what, how are the communications with the nursery school? Because I think, is the letter you're referring to the one of February 19th?
I think it was.
And I don't know if there's anything submitted after that or any discussion after that?
There hasn't been. So what we'll do is we'll work, we'll have the nursery school do a more clear explanation of that and attach it to our letter to you. Does that make sense? Because then that way you've got it directly from them. And that, we think, makes sense. And then I would just suggest that the EAF reflect that it's a nursery school.
Yeah, every time. I feel like there's, even in this revision, it says daycare and not a hostel.
Yeah, it says daycare and the nursery school at different places. So I do have one more suggested change to the EAF part one that I just wanted to kind of go over quickly. It's on page five, the 13, as it relates to letter C. It says that, will the proposed action use or create a new demand for water? The answer is yes, which is what they identified. The total anticipated water usage demand per day is identified 11,000 gallons per day. It's a little bit low for this development. The number to justify that, I think is accurate, but at this point, I'm just going to suggest it not be raised to about 16,000 gallons per day. The reason being is that I just want to make sure we cover all the daily uses associated with nursery school slash daycare, but also the 140 residents that were identified in a couple of the reports that we received. So, we're still working through the water clogs and the sewer clogs as they come in. But right now, I think a safer number would be 16,000 gallons per day under that slot.
Can you just repeat that?
Sure. So, letter C, page five. Page five, C, the very first question asks, number one, the total anticipated water usage slash demand per day. I'm suggesting that go to 16. And so, also D, which is the next box down, because water in, water out, that would go to 16 as well.
I don't know if this is, okay, but we do have a representative from the nursery school here. I don't know if you are in a position to comment, but would anyone like that, if that's something that's possible? I mean, I know that we need something written eventually, but we might have a little bit of clarification on some of those hours and questions. Sure, you can ask her.
I can give you clarification as much as I can, but the issue is that for a preschool program to offer, if we wanted to do four hours even, we have to be also licensed by New York, by OCFS. It's very confusing. We have, we're a preschool chartered by New York State Board of Regents, but in order to operate more than three hours, we also need to be licensed by New York State as a daycare center. So if we want to offer like 8 to noon program, we also need to, so we have two oversight. It's very confusing. Our plan was to, you know, we currently offer 9 to 12. We'd like to extend that to more like a regular school day. So for parents who have children in kindergarten, first grade, they're not like, you know, two different drop-on and pickup times. That's our ultimate goal. So, but there will be still people who will be, you know, doing a half-day program. And we're hoping that the traffic would be spread out. We only have so many parking spots, so we don't want everybody coming and dropping off at the same time. Anyways, thank you.
We'll kind of gather up all of that in the requirements and share those. The main issue is making sure that the traffic numbers are reflective of the operation.
Right.
And they're different for nursery schools and daycare centers. Yeah, I think also, I think one of the board members also asked about the sewer scenario situation. So I talked to both Bill Davis and Matt McKenna, who represent MRB group and work with the village closely on that front. I got, I sent an email to that effect as a separate from my letter. But if I can just read that out, basically I have what the process is for us right now. The sewer collection system appears to have the full capacity for the development. Confirmation of this can be completed once the project flows are provided by the developer, which we're working through, through our letter. The overall wastewater treatment plant does have high flow conditions that are relative to excessive inflow and infiltration that the village is currently addressing in deals with stormwater and which is not relative to the average daily flows. This work is ongoing and is a necessity regardless of any contribution by added users. So, at this point, the one of the reasons why I wanted to provide a higher water gallons per day numbers so that I can show we have the ability to handle that flow and then some. So we went on the safer side with a higher daily usage, which also has a higher outage. But ultimately, we have the capacity of the plant to handle both of those numbers. And then I wanted to provide a general overview from the two gentlemen who work most closely with the village as relates to sewer. So you have that for your records as well. But we'll refine our calculations, working through the developer and the engineers. And at this point in time, you know, there's enough information to validate that, but we'll fine tune as we go through the process. But those are all conservative numbers, so. I guess, I would say from our side, we don't object to the higher numbers. There are obviously more conservative factors built in. We don't think we're going to use that much water, but absolutely conservative is the way to go. And you have capacity, so that makes sense.
Yeah, our initial numbers are based on historical media records, which we're prepared to design them for engineers. We tend to be very conservative on our design sets or the permission, or the purpose with the clarification.
And assume everybody leaves their showers on for an hour. So, I think it's a much safer approach. But I think, I believe those were the questions the board had from the last board meeting.
Yeah, and we do have, I'm sure, record of what the actual capacity is for our system, total input and output. And that would be located where?
I believe there was a forward report that was provided to the town.
That says what that is.
Yeah, I can get that information for you again, I apologize.
No, you probably are this.
I should get it referenced, I guess.
Because, you know, that's me. Let's quantify what high means, what's high capacity.
Correct.
If it's 32,000, we're talking about a 16 from 11, that's not so scary.
Sure. I know that if the number was around 20,000 gallons per day, that we would still have the capacity of the plant.
Yeah, okay. Laura, oh, sorry.
Do you have a number, a more final number of, first of all, I'm a little confused, nursery school, kindergarten, the number of children in one, the other, or combined?
Well, the reports to date stated 48 children. I don't know if that number is high or low for what they're really expecting to see, but.
It's not a final number.
It may not be. At this time, I don't know that answer.
So that would certainly then affect.
Which is why we're going with a more conservative number for that. So, the rule of thumb is 20 gallons per day for a student, multiplied by 48, they gave us a gallons per day. Same with the employees, which is a little bit lesser number. It's 15 gallons per day per employee. So that number comes to like 1,200. So we've upped that to 2,000. And I think realistically, the number's probably more like around 800 gallons per day for a typical daycare center. So, I think we went pretty extreme just to cover that what-if scenario of how many more students, how many more employees could be there. So that was the reason for hiring the daily usage just to make sure that we're a little bit conservative in that process. As we go through the process, they will have more specifics to provide us, which will help generate a realistic number for you. But I don't believe it'll be higher than that 16,000, which is why we want that at that point. Maybe I could just.
Maybe I could just offer something to keep in mind. You're focused now on the secret process, right, and determination of significance. As we continue on the process, or we're going to get to a determination on that, there are open issues. So as Lance says, 30 some odd comments, right? We were down less than 50. We were very excited. We, there's going to be additional back and forth. Those we're going to do as site plan and final subdivision issues. If there's anything bigger that you feel like needs answering before a secret determination, obviously we'll elevate the priority on that. And I'm hearing we definitely need clarification on the nursery school. And final details, if you will, the hours of operation, the number of children, et cetera. And we will do that.
A related question for clarification. I'm still a little fuzzy on how the nursery daycare building fits into the total project in terms of completion. Is it, is it an independent entity? Is there, basically, in this site design, there's a set aside of a lot for it, but that's dependent on funding and a whole lot of other things. How does that fit into the approval process? Does that come in later?
Good question. So I don't have an answer sitting here. But we're going to figure one out.
I would say that right now, we're planning on having the funding go along with the first phase so that it would be built at the very beginning. But again, like you said, that could change with the funding situation. It could go into the second phase depending on what happens with the daycare's financing. But the approval, if you find, if you grant site plan approval, it would be for that daycare as well. And they would pull a building permit whenever it becomes time for them to pull a building permit, just like a homeowner would.
And so your approval would show that lot as being a daycare facility or nursery school in this case, with all the improvements associated with that. Anything different than that, if this board were to approve it, would require them to come back to this board for reevaluation of that, that one lot?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, for Lance. So is there anything in your August 22 letter, however many, 36 points? Is there anything in there that we need to address prior to moving forward on the EAF?
In my current letter, no. There is, there's two points that I do want to point out. One is that they're still proposing a future road. So in lieu of calling it a what-if scenario, I believe that the title, the term that they were using was an optional future road extension. I just said it's on the plans now, so call it a right-of-way to the village and it'll get filed as a right-of-way to the village. Doesn't mean that there will ever be a road there. It just gives the village the ability to make that connection when the time comes. I think that was one of the open-ended items that we were talking about before. I think all the other ones, at least to this point, have been addressed. The plans as shown are what is...
That optional, but that's the one on the south west.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So there's a development in the future next door.
There's a couple items that I'm, like I mentioned earlier, working with the Department of Public Works, where this to clarify, I, village road, some of the village road requirements, and the location of the water sewer maze, just to help typically we keep them as far outside the painting as possible. So a lot of times, there's alternatives that are allowed and I just want to make sure I get clarification from them before I make that suggestion.
I have a question. I brought this up several times, but it was always the wrong time. But maybe we're getting closer to the right time. Alternative energy sources on that site, solar, geothermal, wind, or other capacities? Because I have not heard a word mentioned of that. And I think the times we live in are such that we need to seriously think about it before we build anything, anywhere. And I was just asking, when would we know something or learn something? Or when could we open a door to this plan?
I think anytime is the right time. At this point in time, it's not in the code, so it's not a requirement. But I believe they're proposing LED lights and lighting. It's just more efficient, it's more cost-saving. But those items today, I haven't seen any proposals as part of this application that reflects some of those elements. I'm sure through building design, they're trying to achieve certain improvements to meet the funding requirements, but they could probably speak more to that than I at this point in time.
And we did provide, we're just looking, I think it was in our March supplemental. Thompsons County has, as part of its referral process, they have recommendations on energy efficiency. So we provided a bunch of information on that and things that are being proposed. We can talk about those tonight. We can save that for part two of the energy section when we get there. But we have provided some information. We're happy to talk about that.
Ricky, are you satisfied to we, to talk about energy?
Well, I think maybe just reopen the door a bit.
Okay.
If I can. Do you guys mind me submitting that email? Just so that's fresh since it's the topic of tonight.
Okay, I think Lance, unless we missed any of the high points from the EAF or your letter, that I did want to give the board an opportunity to ask you some of their technical questions in person and recognize that if you can't answer them now, that you'll make note of it and you can get back to us in response. Okay. So, I know Mr. Alberg has some questions.
Well, first, a small one. What is the nature of the EAF as? It is not a contractual obligation, but for example, when the EAF says no pesticides will be used. Or is somebody swearing to the fact that there's no pesticides will be used? Or where does that fit into the? There's no anticipated use of pesticides.
Correct. Harmful, above the threshold that's allowable with everyday residential uses.
Anyway, I wanted to get into something else, actually. And this is not necessarily related to the EAF, but it is related to the observations on the design and having to do with roadway design. And I'm turning to MRB for some advice on this. We have this diagram that is in the subdivision bylaws that has received a lot of criticism, rightly so, and has been interpreted, you know, you've all seen that diagram. And in the year and a half that we've been discussing this project, it has been interpreted in many different ways, depending on whether you're looking at a collector's street, a local street, a private road, what's the village pattern. And that, I think, misleads sometimes. It's a sort of a, what do I call it? It's an academic look at roadway design and, you know, one size fits all. And so actually, I went out and did a, did my own survey of roads throughout the village just to get a sense of what, what is common for roads here in Truanceburg. And I actually went to about 20 different locations. And most of the roads, virtually all around, are around 20 feet wide. Some 20 feet six, some 22. The largest ones were 22. Well, I can go down some of these. South Street is 20 feet six. Pennsylvania Avenue is 20 feet. Wig Street is 22 six. Elm Street, 20 feet. Local streets, Washington Street's 21, Prospect 21, hopping down Searsburg, 21 six. Curry Road, 21 six.
Main Street's 40.
Yeah. And those are the two exceptions. The two exceptions are the state highways, Route 96 and Route 227. Main Street being 40 feet, and that's with two parking aisles.
That includes the two parking?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the travel lanes are 11 feet on Main Street. So anyway, the point being that we have, we have precedent to look at in Truanceburg to guide us. And I guess, oh, actually, one of these that I thought was interesting is if you go to the adjoining development, Larchmont and Tamarack, which are very recent developments in Truanceburg, their roads are 20 feet wide, no curb, no shoulder, no sidewalk, which is quite a bit different than what our diagram is calling for. So I guess what I would, oh, well, let me go to another thing here. In the, in the diagram and the zoning bylaw, it says applicability. All required improvements shall be designed, constructed, and installed to conform to village design specification. Such specifications are outlined below and may be modified or expanded from time to time. Further clarification and consultation may be obtained from the village engineer. And you acting in that capacity. I guess one of the things that I would love to have, and I'm sure that you have shelves of books of roadway design standards. And I think that it would be good if you could give us, the board, a little quick course on roadway design and in some ways, apply it to what we're seeing in this project so that, so that we are more knowledgeable about how to proceed.
Well, that was one of the questions that I have for the Department of Public Works supervisor as well. It's just to kind of go over, I saw the same detail that you looked at and I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page going forward. Most village roads require curving. The one that's proposed at this point does not, and they're doing it for drainage reasons. And one of the modification elements is it can be modified. And we typically do see this. A lot of municipalities that I represent and work with, they modify these roadways all the time because not one roadway fits everything. There's a number of developments that have gutter on one side and a shoulder on the other. Half of it is that New York State DEC has green infrastructure requirements. So a lot of these developments that take place in more rural areas are trying to provide more of a rural road field. And gutters, which is a town requirement in one of these places that I'm at, just doesn't fit that. So they've been working back and forth with the supervisors there to try to address what is absolutely needed and what isn't needed. The one element that we are looking for is it has to meet fire code requirements and New York State requirements in terms of width for a fire apparatus to make it through. Other requirements are the thickness of the road. So those are the two bases that we start all the review under. Anything in terms of width beyond that, that's when we would defer back to the public works supervisor because they're the ones that have got to be, to maintain it. And so ultimately, it falls back into the village's hands. So we don't have the authority to make that decision. I know it's written that way, but ultimately, the ultimate authority comes back into the village. So I don't mind providing you some specs that we design and work with other municipalities, but you know, most of the municipalities that I have are townships, so they're going to look a little bit different. But collector road, subdivision road, commercial roads, the thickness is where the difference usually lies. And so maybe that provides some clarity.
Well, is it, is it possible for you to take 15 minutes of a meeting and just talk with us about some of that?
Sure. No problem with that.
It does sound, though, that it's still fairly unclear and open to the interpretation of different individuals and boards. So it's not a simple layout of a road, and that's the road, and that's correct, and that's the design. It does, what you were just saying and telling us implies a lot of people participate. And sometimes the interpretations can be a little dicey or goosey.
But it sounds like the front things are, can an emergency vehicle get down the road?
Yes, and the thickness, but that's the only two sort of more factoids I've heard.
But I was also pointing to a word that I know will be important to you, which is gutter and or ditch, same idea, right? So we all witnessed the ditches and hector being more or less effective in that. So that's where you consult the DPW saying how we really dealt with.
Which one he prefers.
Yeah, what have you seen in this, in this time?
But the width and the thickness are going to have to meet specs. They have to meet that criteria regardless. And then anytime there's a hydrant on these roads, they have to have fire code, which is 26 feet wide of pavement. So it's going to meet the criteria. But hydrodrives are a little bit different. They can go to a little bit thinner road. But the thickness is still typically required them to meet all those.
What is the, and the thickness is, what is the thickness of the asphalt? And what's the thickness of the gravel or the bedding under the asphalt? So what's the total?
From top, I, from the top of my head, I don't know that answer. I don't want to reference a number that's not correct. But there's a lot of layers that go into it and a lot of layers that go into it. So ultimately, when it's all said and done, each road's a little bit different depending upon the type. Collector road's a little bit sturdier, a little bit thicker because it's got heavier vehicles on it versus a subdivision road, which has more everyday vehicles.
So there's variance in...
Correct.
Think how informed you're going to be for the next project.
Did you have more questions? Ricky, did you have some specific other questions for MRB? Did you have more questions?
Well, we all have one question. I volunteered to help people out there in this horrible flooding we had recently. So the water question, I think, has to stay very abstract because it's more up to Mother Nature than us what we're doing. Just the things I would recommend by canoe early and often.
So we're recognizing that we're talking about that total volume of water in and out. It is, it includes storm runoff into the sewage or it does in the hot? It does in the hot? Right, okay. When we're talking about our overall system.
Correct.
Capacity, okay. So that's a good point.
So ultimately, what is the major runoff for all this collection of all these new, let's say, new proposed streets to this project? Coming in and going out, where does it all kind of end up? Does it run in ductwork? Does it run underground? Does it run in, next to the larger roads, up against the sidewalk? Where does it all go?
So right now, their plan is collecting from corner to corner, corner to corner. It's all going to a facility, through pipes, through gutters, through ditches. So some of it will be infiltrated, which is a requirement in DEC. Obviously, the soils are not the greatest, so not, everything gets calculated that way, which is why DEC has thresholds that you have to meet. Ultimately, it ends up into a stormwater facility on-site where they'll treat it and hold it back to a point where it's released into the wetlands, which ultimately, I believe, transverse towards South Street, if I'm correct. But at that point, where it's discharged, it's been collected, treated, and held back at a lesser weight than it's currently going off the property.
When you say treated, you take some toxic elements out of it?
Yeah, but the facilities are designed to help clean the water before. That's the whole point of stormwater facilities.
Equally.
Correct. They have to meet all the DEC requirements. And I say that they have to meet the DEC requirements. So our review takes those requirements into play, compare them against their project, check the boxes that are applicable. But ultimately, even after we get through with our review, this project's got to go to DEC for that same review before they're going to even issue a permit to allow them to do construction on the site and then ultimately close out that permit once the construction has ended. But they're also obligated from that point on to continue to maintain those facilities, both through the agreements that they have on-site and the agreements that they made with DEC.
Does anyone else have further questions?
And I don't know if this is appropriate here, but because it was the one item that I got picked up on the environmental, I forget which database it is online. For Truanceburg, you have a wastewater treatment plant that has been in violation in the past and it looks like it's getting a little better with time. Does that come into play at all in terms of whether this project could affect that? Or is that something that's just going to be taken into account as soon as seen?
Right. Ultimately, yeah. That's another permit that's governed by DEC in terms of what gets released to the sewer system. They have to meet that criteria and that permit obligation. But our review, our review is strictly looking at capacity and convenience. So we want to make sure, one, the pipe sizes make sense because there's a flow going in and out. And two, does the size of the facility have the ability to handle whatever this development's going to take and send that away? And that's both what I sent an email out earlier and touched on earlier, that, you know, even if this had a 20,000 gallon a day of water runoff, which it won't, but if it did, we still have capacity plus to handle this load that's running from the site. In terms of the violation, that's a separate project that's going on with the community that we're working towards mending and following up. But that's got a separate action item that's required to be, you know, modified and mitigated against to meet DEC. Has nothing to do with this project.
Related to the water quality...
Related to the water quality, have any runoff from the site or anything that's being collected on site? We talked about pesticides, but is there any, I may have missed it, something on landscaping and use of any fertilizers or herbicides and so?
I don't know what they're proposing to do, but right at this point, it's not identified that are proposed at this moment.
And one last question, kind of related to that. Are dogs and cats going to be allowed in the rental units?
That's a question.
Dogs and cats are allowed if they are considered service animals or...
That's federal.
Or what's the other?
Or companion animals.
But not as casual pets.
Exactly. Those are often pets as well. Right. But the D E C standards for treatment and storage, et cetera, all take it, they're based on kind of what I call everyday life, which assumes, in many communities, you know, we've got rural, we've got farming operations in those parts of city. That's why you have the storage and the treatment on site and the different methods. They actually, you know, they just upgraded, now it's not just, but recently they upgraded the design manual. That's the new requirement for infiltration. That's looking at some of those issues and saying, instead of transporting all our stormwater somewhere, let's try to get it back into the ground because that's the best approach.
And the cast layer modifier, right?
Cast layer.
Okay.
I have a really broad question, and I'm not sure, maybe you know, if you'd like. So with the E I F, if we answer yes to any of those questions, does that automatically trigger, do they need to write an E I S?
No, not in the E I F part one.
Part two.
So the part two, no. Even if you checked a large impact, doesn't necessarily mean that they, oh, I have to go through an E I S. And obviously, Guy can correct you where I'm wrong, but ultimately, that just means that there has to be some level of mitigation that's been deemed appropriate, both by this board, by us, and all your support that you have that says, yep, that's been mitigated, or if it has not been mitigated to that satisfaction, to correct whatever that impact is. And that's typically what then generates the next level of review, which is the E I S.
And you'll get to that on part three. In part three, you go through all the potentially large, and then you look at, for each one, what is the issue and how, if at all, has it been mitigated?
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I think that's a great segue to talk about part two, which Nance is going to walk us through. And so we're going to look today at the large questions, and if it starts off as a yes, then we end up working on the details below. We'll do that as a no, so we're going to look at the larger overall thoughts.
So everybody last meeting got a copy of this. This is the part two questions. So we briefly went through some of this before, but ultimately, what it is, is this is largely based on the E I F part one that we just reviewed, that a lot of these questions and answers identify the section under each light item. So item number one, for example, impact on land, they reference the specific section of the E I F that you can refer to to help answer some of those questions. Tonight, I think the goal that at least I think we're considering is, is let's just go through the first question of each one of the large categories. Never mind the type of impact potentially with those, just the category itself and say whether or not we believe this is a yes or no, meaning that there's potentially something there that we have to further evaluate through the review process. So if we start off with item number one, impact on land, what it states, it says, "Proposed action may involve the construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site." The section of the E I F that it references is part one, D one. Ultimately, and I wrote in the box in red, red is my suggestion, is basically my consideration for this subject, whether it's a yes or no and why I identified it as such. There's approximately 14.8 acres of the project site that will be physically disturbed, requiring compliance with the New York State general permit requirements. The project has an average depth of water table that ranges between 0 and 17 feet, and this project will be constructed in phases that will likely continue for more than one year. Those are all reasons why I believe that answer could be a yes. And being that I identified it a yes, I think at this point, what I'm looking for is, does the board agree or disagree with that?
Can I just ask a quick question? Do we need to finish part one before moving on to part two?
So, Guy, you tell me if I'm wrong, but at this point, my understanding is that for all intents and purposes, we have, and they're going to make one more revision based on tonight's discussion and submit that to you. Ultimately, before you complete the seeker, yes, I would suggest that you have the full E I F part one signed, that you're ready to go, that you feel has been acceptable to the board.
Yeah, I agree. The seeker is an integrated process. It's not supposed to be done in isolated steps, pretending that part one is somehow totally different from part two. They're part of the same process, so as long as you have part one substantially complete, you should be looking at part two, but you should not do part three until your part one is pretty much final and your part two analysis has pretty much been completed. Seeker doesn't require that you do everything perfectly. It requires that you take a hard look and make a reasoned elaboration explaining why you've made the determination you have. And I don't think you can make a reasoned elaboration if you don't have a completed part one.
Okay. So given that we are on item one, and so we're all saying a yes, anything to come back? Okay. Question to you?
Question to you. Impact on geological features. Proposed action may result in a modification or destruction of or inhibit access to or unique or unusual landforms on the site. Examples are cliffs, stones, minerals, fossils, caves. The example they gave us was, look at E I F part one, E two category. I believe we identified it as no, that there's no geological resources or features in this area. Would the board concur? No, is the answer to that question?
Yes. Okay. No, yes.
That's correct.
Number three, impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, rivers, lots of lakes. The site, as we know, has wetlands on it, it's been delineated, it's been recorded. Check the boxes, yes.
Okay.
Item number four, impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to the groundwater or an amplifier. They identified parts one as D point two, section identifies. Project operations, under this category, we identified no, as there's no mining or other type of potential contaminants. But my response to this section is, the project site and adjacent areas to the site do not contain water supply wells, as the village residents and the proposed project are connected to a polluted water supply. The project will also be required to comply with New York State D E C general permit requirements, which are designed to prevent, to prevent and direct discharge of stormwater runoff influence onto, prevent from discharging those type of things onto adjacent properties. And a D E C command will be required. So I had to identify this as no.
Okay.
Intuitively, I'm sort of thinking, well, wait a minute, you know, but then I see what they're really after here is an effect on water that could be used to drink.
Yes.
Or for irrigation or things like that. So given that there's a public drinking water supply, it doesn't apply, because none of those questions are hard to cover.
And just not to interrupt, but as a preview, you'll see a lot of that, what they're looking at in terms of contaminants is meeting certain state or federal standards. So all projects, not doing anything has an ecological impact, but all projects have air impacts. When your heat or air conditioning goes on in your house, there's an impact. But what they're looking for is whether or not this project is going to cross certain clean air act thresholds, how many tons of a particular contaminant are going to be released. So residential projects almost never trigger that standard, but it's theoretically possible they could, you know, if it was big enough. So you'll see that standard where you instinctively say, well, it's got to do something, but what they're looking for is, is it going to trigger it to a level that we should be doing scientific or qualitative analysis on what they're doing? If we were discussing an aluminum smelting plant, we would have clicked yes on this. If they're putting in a gas station near an aquifer recharge area or an lubrico fan, you would have clicked yes. So you're just going to see that sort of analysis repeated over and over again. And what we're looking for, not to steal thunder, is the areas where we need to take a deeper, more direct look.
Okay.
So we agreed for four is a no?
I do.
Yes.
All right. Five, impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in the development on land subject to flooding. Further review of all the FEMA flood maps, this site does not show up, which is a typical trigger for this action. So I had identified this as no.
Go ahead. No, you're on the board.
I have a small problem with that because things are changing so rapidly and so much is getting paid and with so many solid substances like buildings on the site, I don't think we can refer to it as it was described earlier, that it was not a site to contribute something like that. It's changing so dramatically that I think we need to look at that in a little more depth.
I would just add, because, and part of it is, you know, term flooding, exactly, is there any kind of quantitative limit on that? Because as you said, flooding can happen very easily if you have poor drainage on the site and then you have any other changes, either topographically or in terms of use or permeable surface added to the area.
So I believe this is more geared towards the mapping, the actual mapping that has been done by FEMA, by other agencies that have identified a problematic area of 100 year, 500 year, and designated, actual designated floodways.
That's flooding from another source in essence, is that right? Flooding from a stream or a river?
Potentially. Potentially, or you could, yeah, but typically, yes.
And remember, you're going to do, you've already checked yes for surface water, which is where the stormwater from the site really gets addressed in detail. So you can certainly check yes, obviously, on this box, but it's going to ask you questions about flood maps and FEMA and floodways. The answers are still going to be no.
Yeah, I would like to, I'm sure there are other people here who know more than I do, but last I checked, the FEMA maps that cover the area, I don't know, it's all, they go back to the 1980s. You'll find this pretty consistently across the country, that our FEMA maps are way outdated and, you know, really describe, they're not good planning tools, and I think that people are learning that. So I think we should recognize that just relying on what's minimally required, obviously the official map, wouldn't necessarily be the most prudent.
I think a thing to keep in mind, too, is like when we say, ugh, my basement got flooded, is a little different than I woke up and sent it to the lake standing on the kitchen table because there was a river coming through. So like a floodplain versus pooling of water or, right? So I'm not sure that that's a yes or a no checking of this, but it seems like this is saying, a floodplain, a floodway, major, maybe less like, will there be erosion and drainage issues in this?
I would just be very cautious about it because I've worked with flood type projects, and, you know, it gets into the whole area of insurance and costs, and whenever you're talking about water damage, it's a very tricky area.
Right.
Because it depends where's the water coming from.
Right.
And a lot of times, you can't make assumptions that everything will be kind of a flood, a flood, a flood. So I would just advise that we err on the side of caution when it comes to water and flood.
I am, yeah, like, I'm persuaded by that notion that the maps are outdated and that that doesn't make sense to me, that requires a deep look. What I'm wondering is, what does the, what would the harder book look like? How would we do that?
Couple of things I want to mention. One is, let's say hypothetically, someone was looking to put this development in a desert and we were sitting in Nevada. Would the developer be required to solve the water shortage problem in the whole community because they want to put residences, or do they just have to make sure they have water for their residences? The answer to that's been answered by the Supreme Court several times in the past 10 years. Going to what the D E C says this question means, it says, "Floodplains are low-lying lands next to rivers and streams. When left in the natural state, floodplain systems store and dissipate floods without adverse impacts on humans, building roads, and other infrastructure. Natural floodplains add to our quality of life by providing open space, habitat for wildlife, fertile land for agriculture, and a opportunity for fishing, hiking, and biking. Floodplains can be viewed as a type of natural infrastructure that can provide a safety zone between people and the damaging waters of a flood. But more and more buildings, roads, and parking lots are built where forests and meadows are empty, which decreases the abilities of land to store and absorb water. Coupled with changing weather patterns, this construction can make floods more severe and increase everyone's chance of being flooded. Some projects may be outside of a floodplain, but still in an area with a known flooding history. Some projects that disturb one, more than one acre may be required to have a stormwater pollution prevention plan and will need to include engineered site design methods to control stormwater. Development in a floodway or floodplain will need to meet state or local regulations. For more information, see the floodplain construction requirements page." So what they're asking for here is, are you in a floodplain? Are you interfering with a floodplain? Are you in a floodway? And even if you're not, and there's a question about water, you may have to deal with a SWIP. So I would go back to the earlier comment that the SWIP comments dealing with land disturbance are where this question would be addressed according to how the D E C in the workbook says you address and answer this question. You're free to answer it as you wish. I just wanted to make sure that's understood.
Is this writing?
I printed it today.
No, but I mean, sorry.
When was the last time the D E C updated this?
This book is from September 2013 when they reissued.
Right, when they redid the E I F part one and part two.
This is the most recent guidance from the state?
It is the most recent thing issued by the D E C.
That's the most recent you have.
Considered final.
Yeah, this is, this is, this doesn't give you answers, it gives you guidance. It may say things that, it may say something like, if you see something scurrying in the night, and it likes cheese and has whiskers, it may be a mouse or a rat. It just don't have to determine what it is. So it gives you guidance.
Okay, so I'm still curious. Let's say we say yes on this. How would we assess this, even if we're not, even if we believe that the maps are outdated and there'll be changes that would subject the lands to flooding?
It'd be, in my opinion, you would take, you know, would go through those actions again, and then the board said, at this point, it would take probably further review with D E C and Army Corps to see if they have any current mapping of the areas of what we've already documented, both in the E I F, both within through our current dialogues that we've had, where they haven't even, for example, this board coordinated with them, and none of the coordination responses came back and said, you're in a flood area. I mean, if they wanted to identify this as a potential flood area, they would have done so, in my opinion, by now.
Yeah, none of the drainage ways going through the site are even, you know, designated on the D E C maps as regulated streams. There's not enough flow. We're not, you know, it's not like in the Village Drive, where that takes everything, you know, spots, where that takes everything. You have those established floodplains, which, you're right, those maps aren't going to change in those currently mapped floodways. But on this, you know, on this site, we don't have any real designated streams. It's a farm field out there that flows from west to southeast, so it'd be hard pressed to state that there would ever be designated as a floodway.
I would look at the soils and really the hydrology of the site. So I've lived in places where you have, you know, upload wetlands and you have different layers, so you can sit on top of a hill and have a flood problem because of what's happening locally with the water. So I think it's just fair, understanding that, I don't know, at least on some basic level, especially given that 67% of the site is, you know, the water drained from the standing water. And it's a fairly large site, so any changes that you make, especially if you're going to have conventional types of the permeable surface. Now, if there's something saying that, you know, we're going to use permeable pavers and that all kinds of active mitigation, not just mitigation in terms of collecting water and treating it, but actually what's going to affect the amount of runoff that's... and treating it, but actually what's gonna affect the amount of runoff that's developed initially, actions like that might be taken to mitigate it. But that's just kind of going far afield. I'm saying that, I think you want...
You are getting back into runoff, which is the SWIP, the drainage design.
I mean, would it make sense, because these questions underneath, I think, are pretty clear and specific. If we just ran through, you know, "The proposed action may result in development in a designated floodway." This is not a designated floodway. Is it in the 100-year floodplain? The answer is no. Is it in the 500-year floodplain? The answer is no. "Proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns." Again, no.
Yeah, though that's the one, I think we're good. I mean, drainage is exactly that, that you're looking at.
Yeah, we would be modifying onsite, localized our drainage patterns, but then we're mitigating that through the design of the SWIP, the SWIP review by MRB and the DEC permitting, is the mitigation that's required for any project of the size to make sure we're not then flooding downstream. You know, these practices are designed for 100 years, so, you know, so that's the best question.
Again, that's going back to, I don't wanna labor it, but I just wanna think that it's something that...
I mean, if you get to the next one, it's about a dam.
Yeah, I think that, I think that that, I don't know, maybe the rest of the board wants to weigh in, but I feel like, right there is that notion of a floodplain in the article that, that note that you read from the DEC. This isn't a land that continuously gets wet as streams swell and then dries out. This isn't what happens. This is an irrigated field that was farmed for some time. So we're not in that area. We wouldn't be contributing to affecting a stream nearby by what the surface water did, right? Because there isn't water. So all those questions go to like, how is the surface water gonna be handled? Will that create a new stream? Is that really, like, not, is it a floodplain or creating a floodplain? Are you gonna handle the water properly?
We have roads coming in and out and big parking lots and buildings. We are, you know, it's gonna be hard.
I think that that's, though, a different section. It's not like the floodplain.
It's a different section, but yes, we could indeed start creating something that's not dam, that's water-infested.
Well, in the spirit of, of looking at this from the 6,000-foot level, we can come back to this, right? And get into the details. I would hope that we can answer this as a yes or no tonight, because that's the dialogue that you're gonna have with the next meeting is gonna be pretty lengthy or could be pretty lengthy, so...
Well, let's, all right, so we've, under number three, we said, "Impacts on surface water," we said yes. So that means we're gonna take, at some point, we're gonna take a very close look at how surface water gets handled, mitigation measures, you know, those kinds of things that are required in this process. And I think what I'm hearing as a reason to say no to impact on flooding is that basically everything that people are concerned about, and maybe the definition of flooding being part of that, is gonna be covered in Part 3, the Part 3 close look anyway. And so we don't lose anything by saying no to Part 5. Is that...
Yeah, that suits me.
But we can remember, we put the brakes on a little bit next time.
It puts a real impetus on Part 3, making sure that, you know, a full, complete understanding of what it means to put, I mean, because, you know, I remember quite a bit of comment from neighbors, you know, widely speaking about the effects of just simple things like putting in a driveway, you know, and an effect on the neighbor immediately, suddenly having a pond that they didn't have before, you know, and things like that. So, but that, I think, I now persuade that that is covered by impacts on surface water if we do, you know, magnifying glass kind of look at it.
So we're okay with that being no for now?
Well, but Part 3 doesn't talk anything about flooding.
I think, I think the idea of surface water, if I understand correctly, is we're, we're tying the two together, potentially.
The effects of what, of what? Make on soil, stormwater, discharge, precipitation, regenerating, receiving water bodies, Part H. That is one proposed action, effect on water quality of other water bodies, pesticides, surface waters.
I guess, I mean, I feel like I keep hearing neighbors really concerned about flooding. Like, I think, my understanding of this stormwater practice is that you're creating these practices that will prevent, you know, erosion, that'll prevent nutrients from getting into the streams and the lakes, but it doesn't, I guess, I mean, I think the big issue is the neighbors and the neighborhood. And that gets back to what you're saying, guys, that, you know, are they responsible for the entire neighborhood? And you're saying that you're not going to, is it...
Because of the stormwater design? And this is what you're gonna get into, Part 3. Because of that stormwater design, we can't possibly make any off-site flooding any worse and fact will likely improve conditions.
Right.
Because you're going from completely unhandled farm field where it just runs where it goes, to a completely integrated controlled storm system, as Andy says, pulling from every corner. I know you're struggling with this one, I just, final thought, the DEC says, this is following up, just further down in that, what guy was reading from, simple as this, "If the proposed action will not result in any development of land subject to flooding, then check no and move to Question 6."
You read that one more time.
Yeah. "If the proposed action will not result in any development of lands subject to flooding, then check no and move to Question 6." So it really comes down to, do you think this land is prone to flooding? If you've got some objective evidence that you think it is, check yes, and let's make lands dig in deeper. Sorry, Lance? And if, if not, based on, and I, I think we would say, based on the boxes we checked and the objective information available, the flood maps, everything's subject to change, but all objective information suggests, no, this is not a particularly high-flood site in and of itself.
So you're saying that, within the confines of the boundaries of this site, that's what five is focused on?
That's right.
That's what the DEC says.
Three is focused on... Offsite.
Offsite events.
Yes, and they call it, that offsite surface water. Does that make sense?
Yes. Can you use my voice?
I just wanna make one point, because you talked about agricultural land where it doesn't have any, you know, pavements or such, but that's also all permeable land. I mean, the fact that you're gonna be taking about 25% of the land surface, it's gonna become impermeable.
That's right, but you've got, as you said, soils that don't drain well. And if it rains a lot, that rain has to go somewhere, there's no onsite storage. So typically, again, this is just what I've seen doing development for many years, it is almost always the case that if you've got uncontrolled farm fields and you are actually doing a development with appropriate, limited, we're not talking paving everything, but following the DEC practices, you're almost always going to improve offsite conditions because, right now, if it rains heavy, you have those heavy floods, it's just got nowhere to go, it can't store on site, and it's not draining fast, it's coming down at all the neighbors down below. That's just the way it has to be. That's, that's what it's been doing for the last 40 years.
So given that we're not addressed very significantly, surface water and the dressing room not gonna cause more damage because it's not allowed to have, you cannot increase runoff, as we've stated several times, that we're gonna really not move fast through that. I feel like we can leave behind the fact that it isn't a floodplain and say, and move on to six, and keep no. Can we do that? Do you?
It's some apprehension, I guess.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know, I just, I, I know that everybody's saying, "Go right ahead," but I do feel like that's been one of the biggest concerns and...
Would it be helpful to quantify what floodplain means to talk about what volume of water?
I guess, I guess that it's not floodplain, but like, if Items D and E, like, the proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. Like, it will. The proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding. It will, won't it?
Well, there are no floodwaters now.
But I mean, but, like, what is, isn't it flooding if, when it rains, the, the field is, you know, a puddle?
So that's again where, I mean, there must be literal answer, there's pooling, there's puddling, there's flooding.
There are weapons.
Yeah.
You got these soils, there are weapons all over. So that's where the water elevation has risen during wet conditions, that's what's, that's what you're typically seeing. I haven't been out there, I can't tie out, I live here, so I don't know what day-to-day activities are.
But a floodplain would be, Susquehanna, where our houses are built on stilts, curses, weak stream, right?
I get that, I get that. And I'm just, I'm just concerned, just anecdotally hearing of the neighbors and how much, how much of a challenge it is to keep their properties dry during just a normal rainstorm. So I feel like if it's going to change the flow at all, like, that's worth looking at, giving a hard look to.
There is something about it in its current condition.
Really? Because it just feels like the, the questions on three don't, like, I feel like D and E of five are the questions that I'm concerned about, and I don't see them on three necessarily, unless I'm just totally missing it.
The current farm field that's there with a lot of vegetation is actually a very absorbent carpet with a root system that goes into the soil, that opens the soil to rain. I've walked in quite a bit, especially after some of these very heavy rains. It absorbs water fairly well right now. What I'm so worried about is, in spite of all how it will be laid out, if, I was reading that the, you know, the asphalt was the kind that can absorb some of the rainwater instead of just running everything off, because the dramatic amount of rains we've had lately, you know, it's a different thing we're dealing with.
So I wonder, Hannah, if we can incorporate both what Vicky's saying and your concern that the language in Question 5 is specific to this notion of floodwaters, but we'd like to make sure we aren't making floodwaters, if we can sort of take those two questions and make sure they get answered when we talk about Question 3. Does that make sense? I've not abandoned the resolution of that, even though they haven't asked that question.
You can add another.
You can add another, you can add statements of potential...
Okay, yeah, that's great, if we can put it in other.
Okay. And that was, you said specifically, which on five, D and E?
Yeah. Yeah. Impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. The answer to this is no. Supposedly would not create this type of regulated air loading, doesn't hit any of those thresholds, as I mentioned earlier. Does the board agree with that?
Yes.
Number 7, impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in loss of flora or fauna. I believe if we go back to the AFR 1, the original ones, there was a statement in there that got triggered as part of the electronic documentation in the AAF that stated, I don't have the original, I wanna bring it to the AAF, which is what led to the next statement. It says, "According to the DEC Environmental Assessment Form EA F map for the project site contains a designated significant natural community identified as a calacurus shoreline outcrop. This community is associated with the shores of Sonic Creek, which is not, which does not occur on this site. Also, there are no federal or state-listed rare, threatened, or endangered species or habitats designated for this area," was my response to this answer. Now, I triggered yes because ultimately on the AF Part 1 in the original law round, it got triggered as a yes because of this designation. I believe our last board meeting, we reviewed that and mentioned that we agreed, maybe I'm misspeaking, that it doesn't occur in this area, that they're typically by the creek area, which there is no creek on this site. It's a shoreline outcrop, which there is no shoreline on this site. So my thought is, is this may in fact be a no, but I had identified it as specifically because of the last, the last discussion, which was, it got triggered as a yes as part of the AAF Part 1 due to DEC designation. But I thought when we reviewed it, we concur that it's not near shoreline, therefore, you can kind of agree that that doesn't necessarily, it's no, but now if you move on to some of the other designations that identified, is there any state or federal listed rare or threatened or endangered or habitats or species within this area? And there is...
So you're suggesting to change that to no?
I'm suggesting to change that to no. But that's up for this board to decide.
Well, it gets complicated when you look at, I mean, you know, all the designations, yeah, I understand, threatened or endangered species, and it's not part of the Tegana Creek shoreline, but then you look at Parts F, G, and H in particular, you know, it starts to get a little bit fuzzier. Maybe not so much F.
Maybe not F, yeah.
But G, certainly G.
But again, of not, they're prominent species, but none of them are endangered. So we would be talking about deer, rabbits, birds, but there'd be some tree line. So I guess, right, again, in the notion of the spirit of the question, are there significant species that will be displaced in here?
Well, clearly, the, the change in the landscape there will, will change the resident population, as it were.
Sure.
So I think the issue is whether one has to address that in Part 3 or something like that as, as a mitigating issue.
We actually don't know who resides there currently, do we?
I think we do, actually.
We do? We have a list of who hangs out there.
There was a flora and fauna study.
Yeah, and who did that?
That was, it's in our...
So we do know about one of ours.
The four in front of that, he doesn't know.
Yeah.
Sister and Mrs. Four in front.
Yeah. I think that's really all the...
We are, yeah, so I'm, I'm consenting to make that a no.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Yeah.
Number 8, impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. This is not in a designated archeological, or excuse me, agricultural district. I did originally state that this was an active farmland. It may have been farmed, but I don't know if it's active farmland currently. And the designation typically is that it's been farmed within the last 3 years. I don't know that it has been. So the reason for supporting...
Just an A every year?
Sure. I don't think that it designated active farmland, though, but I understand what you're saying. So I, I put it out as being no.
It's also residential zone.
In this residential zone, yeah, it's not an ag district, it's not actively farmed, therefore, the reason supporting my no designation with those two, I agree. Does the board object to that?
No.
Number 9, impact on aesthetic resources. Main uses of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current main use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. So when you do the EAF map, it basically identifies that the project site is located within 5 miles of an officially designated Kiyuga Lake scenic byway. Being that the project is centrally located and surrounded by vegetated areas on all sides, there are no other identified aesthetic resources near this project site, I designate, I click this as a yes for the reason that it got triggered as a yes as part of that Part 1, but this is another one where I feel like, based on the fact that there really isn't anything that you can visually see from this project, or this project would directly interfere with visually, that's, that doesn't mean scenic, I think you could answer this as no. Does anybody agree or disagree with that?
I agree with that.
So we can identify that as no? Okay. Number 10, impact on historic and archeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archeological resource. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archeological resource. Identify this as yes. According to New York State Environmental Assessment Form E A F map, the project site is located near and identified historic building, the Camp Herman site, which is listed on the state or national register of historic places. The project site is not located within it or adjacent to it, and there is designated as sensitive for archeological sites. This might be the only site that isn't, so if we have revenue, it seems to be in one. But this does have that designation because it's near, um, the Camp Herman house.
Yeah, you're aware that that's the Herman camp.
Herman camp.
Not the Camp Herman.
The way you got, the way it came up is Camp Herman.
Camp comma Herman.
Yeah, maybe that's what it is. Very good.
That's exactly what you did.
So that's identified as yes for that reason. Does the board agree?
Yes.
So, just for clarification on that, the, the project will be required and has gone through a review with the Shippensburg State Forest Preservation Office for their blessing of the project. Number 11, impact on open space recreation. The proposed project may result in loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of open space resources designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Being that this project is not located within or adjacent to an identified or designated open space in a recreational area, I identify this as a yes. Number 12, impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. There are none designated for this area, therefore, I identify it as a no. Number 13, impact on transportation. Proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. The project includes the construction of 73 units, a nursery facility, and 154 parking spaces within the village with connections to both ends of Indian Avenue and South Street. The traffic impact study was completed by SRF and reviewed by Irving Anthony. The conclusion was no mitigation measures were recorded to be provided as a result of the project. However, based on the fact that there is an increase in traffic, I identify this as a yes. Board agrees with that. 14, impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. My response was the project will meet or exceed the Energy Code, the T C Energy Guidelines, and the village requirements. This is not the type of project that would have or be expected to have any major energy impacts based on the use of it proposed, therefore, I identify it as a no. Do you agree with that designation?
Well, I thought that was something we were going to discuss later, the fact that it might create some energy sources. Am I misreading this?
Well, I don't know, let's look at that, right? So A, proposed action would require a substation, no. Require a new energy transmission or supply system. It's all about the volume of usage.
But maybe it should create energy in its own way. You know, that was the point I made earlier.
I know, I just can't remember what the answer is that we can talk about that. I just feel like it's a seeker.
It wouldn't be unusual to check yes, someone's going to do a deeper dive than we could.
Sure.
Love to see that happen.
Just, Lila, you have an answer for it?
Yeah.
Making that a yes.
Yeah.
Number 15, impact on no's, odor and light. Proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. These impacts are mostly temporary and deemed non-existent or minor as they arise exclusively during construction in terms of the noise and odor. It could be further mitigated by any desire to site plan or village committee restrictions restricting hours of operation as it relates to the vacant facility. However, I identify this as a yes because there is potential for impact there of light, which is, we're all here. Number 16, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. So, this project is located within 1,500 feet of the Truinsburg Central School District, which is one of the items that we consider as part of this. If you were to check yes, it's one of the items. Are you located within, I think it's the very first one, A. The proposed action is located within 1,500 feet of a school, hospital, licensed daycare center, group home, indigenous home retirement community. So, though I don't believe there's any contaminants necessarily from the site that would contribute to that, because that you're within the 1,500 feet, this is why I didn't name that as a yes.
We, we would say, we would say this question really is geared towards exposure. So if the guideline is to determine if you need to answer the sub-questions in this section, you should ask, is the project site on adjacent to or near a location that contains contaminants that may or will be disturbed, released, or leached out? Will the proposed project use, create, dispose of, or store any hazardous substances as part of its construction or operation? So really is designed for non-residential. So for residential projects, we typically see this as no, even if it is within 1,500 feet of the school. Because people don't use large amounts of hazardous materials. Just a thought.
But if we say yes, then we can go down and tick all of them. That would be a potential answer for, for that statement.
And there are a lot of sub-questions, actually. It's good, it's a good handbook.
Let's see, board? Yes? Okay, great. We like answering those questions. Okay. 17.
Consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with the adopted land use plans. The answer we identified is this is yes. Proposed project is consistent with the adopted land use plans, however, the project includes the construction of 73 units. The total population of the village is estimated to be near 1,500 per the 2016 census data, being that the project, in order for it to increase 5% the village's residents, you need 79 residents or more. I believe we have potentially 140, so that's why I didn't name this as a yes. That potential of the village increasing population. Number 18, consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. The proposed project includes residential uses consistent with the nearby uses and character of the nearby uses of residences. That again has also demonstrated that the project is consistent with the village zoning code. Some of the elements there, I don't know or applicable, but I identify this as no.
I would just mention, because we still have some open items that do relate to the zoning code, so I don't know.
As it relates to special use permit?
I don't disagree, but either we'll need a special use permit or we won't. It wouldn't change the consistency with the zoning code, right? Because a special use permit is a legislative determination by the village board, and it's an appropriate use, it just needs to go through a special process to ensure that at that specific site it's okay. But it's a process, it's not a, it's not a reselling change or anything like that. But, and you like to check boxes.
They require permitting, so, I don't know, just to keep it, like, there's an open item to store. I don't know.
I still feel like that, that nearby uses, if we're talking about a school, we just acknowledge we're 1,500 feet within a school and the current T C N S is, what, a half mile, a half, quarter mile? Sorry, something like that. So the definition's nearby, I mean, it's a special use permit, but we're not putting in, or I'm not putting anything in. It's not being proposed to put something drastically different than what the village has.
The large buildings in this project actually does sort of challenge community character.
Which I think is addressed in 17, which is why we checked yes there.
Oh, we can get back to it.
Yeah, yeah, right, so with the bullet underneath.
Because that's a major section in that comprehensive.
Yeah.
And I think we could kind of stick to that.
Absolutely. I just, because this is my first, my in his chair, let's, I'm going to stir the pot a teeny tiny bit, and point out that under 18C, one of the things to be considered is that proposed act, proposed action may displace affordable or low-income housing in an area where there is a shortage of such housing, which is interesting that that is on the mind. Well, the secret book. Okay, 18. That was it?
So 18, what, what are we doing?
We're keeping it, uh, no, because we're going to address this notion of visiting keeping with a community plan, so there's that. And that if it, it's not changing it, if it requires a special use, then it'll be applied for and be deemed through that channel, it's not through this. Or not. I do feel like it's a, it's a different question. I mean, if we're already checking a bunch of yeses, let's just check another.
I'm with that too, just because, you know, if you had to sort of, if you were highlighting the things that have seemed to trigger concerns, community character would be high on the list.
Okay.
It's a good start to talk about.
Yeah.
Okay, make it a yes.
Yes, it is. That is the part two, at least that portion of it. So, the next board meeting, if we get to that point, will be to further evaluate those yeses that we have had on the right, going through those questions, determining the significance of that impact, whether it's a no or small or a large. And then if it's a large, what the mitigation measure is or is required to be, if it has been done on the right.
Do we, oh, God. Do we want to start? I mean, it's not even nine o'clock yet. We'd start on some of these, but it's going to be a really long process. I assume going through all of these processes, I don't know.
We could, I feel like it might be, I'd like to maybe hear some words from Guy about when we think of these words, no small impact or moderate to large impact, and that maybe a good use of time would be to think of these questions on our own and assess that, so that when we come together as a group, it's, you know, we, you know, have more of a, maybe I'm speaking sort of from my own desire to have more clarification on some of these questions.
Yeah.
But would you speak a little bit to, as we go home and think about this and do our good homework and look at the things we've checked yes and the sub-questions when we say small impact, moderate to large impact?
Well, the no or small impact box and the moderate to large impact box, there's a nice gray line between those two, and it's somewhat of a subjective determination. But what you're looking for is an impact that largely is extraordinary. Something that is going to be generally beyond what you would expect from the impacts normally associated with the allowed uses legislatively declared through zoning as appropriate for that zone. Now, approved uses can have significant impacts. Obviously, if steel smelting was allowed in the zone, a steel smelter's going to have a significant impact. So the zoning itself doesn't lend itself to answering the question yes or no, but you have to analyze it through that lens. You have to understand, what is the impact here? And is it extraordinary compared with if this were a traditional subdivision with single-family homes? And you have to weigh it in that instance. It's pretty rare to have the answer be no. For C E As, since there's only two in the entire county, not sure I understand why, but there's only two in the entire county, that's pretty much an easy no across the board on every question. But some of this stuff, you're going to find that even though there's an impact, it's going to be small. Some of the stuff, you may feel that the impact may rise to the level of moderate, and then you're going to go to the next phase of looking at whether and to what degree it is mitigated. And that's where you're going to get your crossover between your seeker review and your site plan review. Because seeker review and site plan review largely are duplicative in many respects. In fact, the D E C is going to be removing seeker review for a whole pile of things because it's merely redundant. Not to say it doesn't serve a different laudable purpose, but it's become too much like NEPA, and so it has its issues. So, one of the things that sort of struck me tonight is the references to the site planning impacts. Like, like, well, I don't know if that's the right, if this is right for this site or that's right for this site, if this should be the use or that should be the use. And you really started to leave the world of seeker and go into the world of site plan review. And in terms of answering the questions broadly, my, my encouragement would be to use the seeker review to examine the environmental aspects of the application and to use the site plan review to identify the site planning aspects of the, of the. And so when I heard comments like, well, the neighbors were very concerned about this, yes, and you definitively should address some of those things in site planning. But the D E C has said that doesn't rise to the level as to trigger a need for special treatment under the environmental rules that we govern, site planning and land use and land use impacts in the state of New York. And again, boards that do this a lot, that are really imbued with doing seeker reviews at every single meeting, there's a certain amount of working knowledge that familiarity brings knowledge, redundancy brings comfort, and you start to understand what these things are really asking about. But again, different people, where you step off the bus is going to determine what your point of view is. So the difference between a no or a small impact and a moderate or a large impact has to do with the impacts of this project on this land concerning the environmental conditions, the community conditions, and other issues that are present on this piece of land. So it will have relationship with its neighborhoods, it will have relationships with the town. The community impacts questions are going to ask things about whether there's adequate fire services, police services, water, sewer, and things like that. So you're looking at the sufficiency of the resources to serve the size, design, and nature of the development. But if you believe that it will increase the number of police calls by 10 calls a year, and you have the police force capacity to handle that, then that would be generally a no or a small impact. If you believe that it's going to use 600,000 gallons of water a day and your water plant or your sewer plant does not have the capacity to treat that, that's going to be a moderate to large impact. So it's not the size of the impact, it's the relevancy of the impact to the nature of the project and the capacity of the existing community to service it. There are judgment calls necessarily in there. If you have, if you have $100,000 in available sewer capacity, it's more of a legislative judgment to determine whether you want 40,000 of it to go to project A or 40,000 to go to project B, and how much you need to have in reserve for I N I, significant flood events, overflow events. That's not really what seeker is specifically aiming at. Seeker is looking for you to determine whether or not the resources and whether or not the impacts of the project are going to be significant. So if you get into the point where it's not going to have a significant impact because the amount of water and runoff that's going to be generated is within the capacity of your plants to treat, then you're going to have a no or a small impact because there's still going to be water flowing. But you're still going to have to, under site planning, understand the mechanisms whereby those pipes and lines interconnect and the quality of the connection because you can't put a tap sleeve on a rusted pipe. So there are aspects of it that deal with infrastructure within site planning, but not necessarily within seeker. So I can give you more of a breakdown on that later, but I'm just saying, when you look at an impact, you have to compare them to something. It's not done in a vacuum. And like I said earlier, doing nothing has substantial site impacts as well. So when you classify it, you're going to be looking at whether it's a no or a small impact based upon what thresholds you believe it may cross. Some of them are going to be obvious, and the D E C is going to have a defined limit for that threshold, like air pollution, which we don't have to worry about here. Some of them are not going to be obvious. So when you look at, for example, 1D, the proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. Well, if they're not going to remove more than 1,000 tons, that's an easy no. If they were going to remove more than 1,000 tons, well, how much more? If the project covers 7,000 acres and they remove 2,000 tons, that's probably not a large impact. If the project is three acres and they're going to remove 7, 2,000 tons, maybe that is. And it's not just the fact that you're removing that much soil or that much topsoil or affecting the hardpan or the horizon of the soil. It's also you're going to take into account and trigger the types of things that go along with that kind of soil removal. How many truck trips is that going to be? How much more construction is that going to entail? So, most of this is integrated, and what the D E C has done by breaking it into 18 separate categories is to say, we're going to look at land, animals and plants, air pollution, water pollution. We're going to have special rules for floodplains. If you want to build in a floodplain, you've got a whole bunch of stuff to deal with above and beyond those people that Jews not do. So I think as you work through it, most of it's going to become somewhat self-explanatory. And you're not always gonna agree on what is no or a small or a moderate to a large impact. But until you get a general consensus, don't check the box.
And so I feel like in going through that, there's some good advice that you gave us to last meeting is, just, you know, as we're thinking of these questions, have some information for what you're making this question. Make that up, make, in your brain, make a, if you can make a decision on, as you're looking at it. It's not coming from nowhere, it's, you know, because...
Right, have a rationale for why you believe what you believe, and as different people explain what they believe based on their look, you may find that your opinion changes. Someone says something persuasive, you may say, that is definitively just a small impact. And somebody says, you know...
Spotted something you didn't see, or...
Yeah, but what about the Indiana bats on the site? Uh-oh, right, there's an issue there. So a lot of stuff like that will come into play. I literally, we had to do an actual multi...
The Indiana bats?
No, 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 it was, I forget what it was called, Henslow Sparrow. I just went through a special seeker review because pre-1985, a single breeding pair of Henslow Sparrows was spotted in a particular town. So we had to do an entire analysis to determine whether or not there were actually Henslow Sparrows, which haven't conceived in the county. There's been a few since 2005, but none within about a half mile of the site. But we still had to go to DEC and say, here's what the data here is, here's what the lab of ornithology says, here's what the bird watchers say, what do you think? And they went out and did a field evaluation and said, no, you're all clear. So it's weird, but little things can make you do more work, and that's the point of seeker.
And then I'm also hearing that you're, right, there's seeker, and it's largely environmentally focused at the whole point.
Well, environmentally is very broadly defined, but yes.
Because then when we get to 17 and 18, those last questions about community plan and community character, that, I'm reading some of the detailed questions, that doesn't mean that under site reviews, some of the features might be, we don't like this, we want this to be quite different, or things like that. Did you catch that part? That when we're looking at 17 and 18, and we're talking about the community plan and community character, that even if it's, we have these concerns about in keeping with the character of our village, we will still be able to address some of those in site plan review. So it's not as if this is...
That this is final.
Yeah, right, and I think that's important for everyone in the village to recognize. Okay.
The look and feel of your community is part of its environment.
Right, right.
Just one thing I would add and perhaps ask. We as a group, in preparing for this meeting, we took Lance's version and we looked through it as a group. A lot of experts who know a lot of stuff, it took us two and a half hours. It's gonna take you some time to go through this. The only thing I've sometimes seen boards do is kind of a work session between a meeting, where you can really get in a room and hash it out, because it's gonna take you a while to get through all these questions. So we just throw that out as a thought, and we would certainly... This has been one of the most thorough, hard looks I've ever seen, and we're just getting to, we're about, you know, we're about to do the deep dive on part two. So I know this is gonna take a little while, we're perfectly comfortable with that, but if there is a way to do a workshop in between, expedite the process.
Yeah, the board has talked about that prior, and I think August being a difficult month to get anyone to come together for anything except to go on vacation, that's certainly something that we're aware we have available as well.
Yeah, quick question for Guy. So we have a village iteration of seeker. And I haven't done, you know, a really close look at whether the village requirements like for criteria for determining the significance of proposed actions are different, more sort of intense than the state requirements in some respects, or less intense. How do the two work together when we get to the issue of size of the impact and significance of the impact?
There's a number of communities that have mini-seekers, as they're called in the vernacular, veevers, I think you call it. The true purpose, at least from my perspective and experience of a mini-seeker, is to designate differential analyses that take into account the nature and features of your community. So you may want to have a more specific and stricter type-one list. You may want to have a broader list of things that trigger a full review. A classic example of that would be you're an old colonial town, very historic in the line district of the Hudson Valley, and, you know, any type of commercial activity with over 100,000 square foot or 50,000 square feet of floor space or a certain number of parking spaces, you say, no, we wanna type-one review on that. We don't want an unlisted for that, line country in this, you know, bucolic 18th, 17th century development in colonial, you know, USA. Each community tends to have its own natural or unique features and circumstances. So when Article 8 was implemented and the regulations were developed, they gave to municipalities in relation to environmental review, sort of as they also gave to municipalities in relation to certain type of wetland reviews, the ability to make stricter rules. You can't be less strict. So you have a few of those in there. As far as the actual mechanics of what's in there, it looks, from my review of it, and I've looked at it twice, and granted, I haven't picked it apart with a toothpick and a toothbrush yet, but the mechanical aspects of what it says is largely a repeat, almost verbatim of exactly what's already in the New York State regulations. And many of those regulations, judicially, you don't really have the authority to overwrite. You're not a state agency. So the statute's given you authority to make certain changes within a very defined set of rules to type-one and type-two lists. But beyond that, there are very few things that you can necessarily change in the seeker process. So I didn't see anything in there that was inconsistent with the standard requirements and timing rules for seeker review. I can certainly look again. What I did see was a few things that would have added to a type-one trigger here, but since it was already a type-one action, it didn't seem like that was a nut worth cracking.
I've seen the same thing, but, sorry. It's very consistent.
Are we ready to say goodbye to number nine and move on to old business? Yes. Is there any old business? Other than this big project review? I don't think so. Is there new business? Rick?
Well, it's, I mean, continuing, but we decided at some point to move to the Fire Hall for purposes of accommodating very, very large crowds. I think it's the last three meetings or so, we really haven't had crowds that would have stressed the Village Hall. So I don't know how people feel, you know, I find the Village Hall a little bit more congenial. Certainly a little easier to do presentations and that kind of stuff, so I just wondered if...
Yeah, I think that would work, especially as we're at this stage of the game.
I went to all three tonight. I was at the high school, the Village Hall, I came here. I came here 12 minutes too early.
Try to come here first.
So do we have to motion to move the meeting back?
I don't think so. I think it's up to you. I'm just sort of...
Yeah.
It feels a little bit, yeah, this one, it's sort of one-third empty is overwhelming.
Yeah, and it puts up, I mean, the EMS and the fire department is making concessions for us.
They don't really maybe want us here all the time, right?
No, it's more work. Okay, so I think, yeah, let's do that, let's move.
So the next meeting back in our cozy quarters? Cozy, if we can call it that.
All right, okay. Any other new business? Okay, excited, listen, turn, and...
I moved it to your turn.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Excellent, thank you.